Good evening. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the City Council for Monday, March 20th, 2023. I'd like to call this meeting to order. The invocation this evening will be provided by, oh, all right. I wasn't sure if you were here. I'm glad you're here. The Family Life Pastor, Anton Badenhurst, and I apologize if I get your name wrong, from the Hope Reform Church.
That's okay. We're from South Africa, so everything is strange for you, so not a problem. Let's pray. Thank you, Lord Jesus, for giving us another day to live and to laugh and to enjoy life. I pray for the City Council for wisdom, to govern, admit the conflict interests and the issues of our time, to create a safe space for every person, no matter what their race or culture or religion, if they're single or married or divorced, if they own a beachfront property or struggle to make ends meet. May this beautiful hometown of South Haven be a place of potential and life for them. I pray that you will open the eyes and break the hearts of the council for the hurt and the true needs of this community, to do what is right, no matter how difficult it may be. I pray, Lord Jesus, that they won't fight for their own agendas, their own ideas or own ideals, but they will fight for the comforts and agendas of this community. I pray for unity in a world of messy, broken relationships. I pray for the City Council's families and will protect them and keep them safe and be good to them. Lord, I pray for the faith communities in this small town of ours, that they will be a blessing and not a burden to the city, that we will not demand, but that we are here to serve. I pray in your holy and most beautiful name alone, in the name of Jesus. Amen.
Thank you very much. And at this time, if you would please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, if you're able.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation under God, with the principle of liberty, justice, and fairness.
That brings us to item number four, the roll call.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Wendy Onuki.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Make a motion to excuse Mayor Smith and Councilmember Reiser.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay. Agenda item number five, approval of the agenda.
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Any comments or notes on the agenda? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
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 That brings us to item number six, an update from the Van Buren Conservative District by Deputy Administrator Emily Hickman. Welcome.
Good evening, everyone. Do you want me to address this?
Yep, please.
Is that better? Thank you for having me. I just wanted to give you a quick update on some programs that we have coming up and some new services that are available. So hopefully by now you have seen the printed copy of our annual report from last year. If not, I have extra copies of those. We tried to add a lot of pictures, make it very readable, just the highlights, but if you only have, you know, 30 seconds, I draw your attention to pages six through nine, just our quick accomplishments and then how the money breaks out, what comes in, what goes out. So hopefully that's a useful tool to you as you're keeping up with what's going on at the district over the last year. Additionally, our tree sale is coming to a close, so the deadline for tree seedling pre-orders is April 7th, and we will be having the pickup for pre-orders and day of sales on April 13th, 14th, and 15th. So I brought a few paper order forms, but we've got an online shop that's pretty easy to use, too. So I wanted to find a reminder on that. We do pickups at our office in Paw Paw, as well as the Liberty Hyde Bailey Museum here in South Haven. That is the only location that will have dune grass plugs available, so that's something new we're offering this year, and the museum is actually having an event the weekend before, so I believe that's Saturday, April 1st, if that's the Saturday. But they're going to do a presentation about dune grass, and we'll have a booth there, so and we're going to have some free plugs that will be given away. We don't have them that day. We pick them up later, but we'll do a raffle and kind of give those away to folks. Additionally, we sent out updated, we brought them to the different offices, updated tax bill inserts. Because a couple of the dates did change, our vendors had some conflicts come up, so instead of recycle roundup being the second weekend in June like normal, it's going to be June 24th in Paw Paw, but the one here in South Haven is still going to be the first weekend in August. And then that third recycle roundup date is October 14th in Lawrence. So we do kick off recycling events in April, so our first one is going to be Large Tire, which is open to businesses, which includes farms, and we are looking for folks to get signed up for that, so that'll be at the DPW. Additionally, we're going to have our first electronics and passenger tire collection indicator. All of these collections are open to everyone in the county, so whichever date works for you, just get signed up with Cali ahead of time, and you'll be all set. And finally, as it relates to recycling, we now have year-round recycling available for electronics as senior services, as well as battery recycling, so you can just drop off your batteries at various locations throughout the county. Here in South Haven, that would be senior services, so lots of partnership and grant opportunities on that, so we're excited to offer those services at no direct cost. And finally, we had some questions about the recycle roundup last time I was here. We are in the process of updating that, so it should be headed to the printers within the next month, and we hope to have it by late spring, early summer. Is there any questions that you might have for me?
I get the newsletter email from you. It's great. And I, the recycling here in town, I was very excited about the electronics recycling. It's Tuesdays and Thursdays from 9:30 to noon. Is that correct?
That is correct, yeah.
And it did say, maybe call first, just to be safe.
Yes, yeah.
I took advantage of it recently, and so happy that it's here.
Thank you for noting that. Yep, those are the hours currently. We did, we always indicate to call just in case they need to change their hours or they're low on volunteers or something like that, but yeah.
All right.
Awesome. Thank you all so much.
Thanks for coming. And that brings us to agenda item number seven, economic development update from Mr. Jim Hediger. Welcome, Jim.
Good evening. Happy spring, by the way. Coming up in June and July, the city staff will begin some, working on some priorities that you've laid out for them. Some of those priorities are things that have been discussed here, and those that involve economic development have involved me in those discussions, and the city managers asked me to update the council on the state of economic development as it exists in a city of about 4,000 people, and what the opportunities are and what some of the obstacles are. We'll spend a few minutes getting through this, hopefully. Just so we're all on the same page, I offer these definitions, that economic development is a program or a set of policies that seeks to improve the economic well-being and quality of life for a community. Ideally, it will recreate, retain, and expand jobs, and businesses for that matter, to facilitate growth and provide a stable tax base. We talked about this in the strategic plan, but in an ethereal context, economic development is wealth creation fostered by positive community cash flow. That is, you think of this in terms of balance of trade or balance of payments. If more money comes into the community than goes out, you are creating wealth, and wealth leads to community amenities and enduring assets within the community. Three things can happen to your local economy, stagnation, contraction, and expansion. And as you can probably guess, it's far easier to get the first two done successfully than it is the expansion part. And also, I think the ability to which a community can affect these kinds of things has always been subject to debate in economic development research, but a solid example that I can cite is Gracchuck County, just north of Lansing. If you were to drive through there 12 years ago, you would have seen flat farmland and nothing else. You drive through there today and you'll see 167 wind turbines, which involved an agricultural economic development strategy to save the family farms by giving those farms, which were less than 800 acres, an opportunity to host a wind turbine, which provided the additional revenue necessary for the farm to stay in family ownership. Either way, as policymakers, you have some role in this, and you sure have a big role in fostering economic expansion if you can. Formulating strategy necessitates examination of some of these challenges. First of all, we need to be clear with the community why economic development is important. We need to understand the obstacles, opportunities, and critical issues in the area. Economic development to me is kind of a do or die type of thing, but I've done the work for 48 years, so that's probably what you would expect to come out of me, but, you know, if you do nothing, that doesn't stop a northern Indiana city chamber of commerce from coming in and talking to one of your businesses and offering them incentives to relocate out of here. So I say, if nothing else, a defensive strategy needs to be in place, and you already fortunately have a pretty good one there. As far as some of the critical issues are concerned, workforce is at the top of every employer's list. You hear it everywhere, and I've always said, the community that comes up with a workforce development solution to meet the needs of their employers is going to be a very wealthy community in a very short period of time, because everybody has this problem, as everybody, most cities have, an attainable housing problem as well, and it's something that this community especially needs to pay attention to. Available industrial sites, or in the business shovel-ready sites. I'm aware that we really have one under city control within South Haven. Identify existing programs, people, and resources. There's a lot of people out there doing this kind of work. It's better to coordinate with one another, especially if we're all in the same state or in the same region. You'd be surprised how often that breaks down, though, but we need to know where we fit in the matrix of existing programs, people, and resources. And I think once we've come up with answers to those challenges, we are able to take a public stance and say, this is important to the community, and here are the reasons why. Here's where we're strong, here's where we're weak. So having set the challenges down, let's look at some strategies, some of which I've discussed with some of you through the past several years, but let's see what's available and what might be appropriate for a city our size. I don't think anybody should ever do any economic development unless they're willing to start with the retention and expansion of your existing employer base, and I think South Haven does this quite well. In large part, this has been Mayor Smith's priority every Friday. He wants meetings with area employers, and he goes out and talks to them and makes them understand that they are important to the city. Question I have is, when the mayor moves on, who's going to pick this up? Because he has been very, very effective in this role, and I think you can look at the record. You've got Revere that you've induced to expand, Spencer Manufacturing is going to expand, US Tarps, Grace Lovejoy, that's all been pretty successful retention and expansion work here. Gol Lake Marine, one of my favorite projects. It's kind of a mixture between attraction and expansion, or attraction and retention anyway. The city needed to retain a full-service marina. We dealt for a couple of years with interested buyers of All Seasons. At one time or another, it was always a housing component attached to it, a luxury hotel or more condominiums or something like that, when in fact, all the city really needed was a full-service marina. And along came Gol Lake Marine, interested in making the acquisition, and the deal almost fell apart. Fortunately, I had a previous relationship with one of the owners, and he called me and said, the appraisal came in way too low. It's going to increase our investment to a level that makes this project cost prohibitive. I got on the phone with Kate and Griffin, and between the two of them, we were able to resolve the issues to Gol Lake Marine. Kate in particular looked at the appraisal and found out that it was a little bit out of date, about $1.2 million out of date, which makes a big difference with a company like this. So we were able to assist them in eventually occupying All Seasons, and I think the city's coming out way ahead in this, in this whole arrangement here. Job growth and retention and expansion. There's a lot more potential for job creation just by talking to your existing employers. About seven to 10 new jobs come from the existing employment base, and if you go down to the second to the last line there, cost-effective local retention and expansion is significantly less expensive. It's a lot less expensive to drive across town and talk to an employer than, say, go to Japan and solicit investment, as I did for many years. So other reasons why retention and expansion are important, companies maintain their existing relationships with local suppliers, so if, you know, if they buy toilet paper from Menards or something, that purchasing chain is going to continue. Companies that move face some pretty difficult circumstances, as do the communities that they move from and to, but overall, I think we can say with a great deal of security that moving is costly. It's something that employers don't want to do, but they will do it if it significantly improves their business or their bottom line. Existing companies stabilize your tax base. They're paying for existing services that citizens across the community enjoy. Retention and expansion is a powerful recruitment tool. Nothing will kill your message faster than an unhappy local business talking to an outsider. As I first started in this business, working for Battle Creek, we had a prospect from England, Dunlop, some of you may recognize it, make very high-quality tires, among other things, competing with Crawford County, Indiana. The company asked me for a list of suppliers in Michigan that could supply certain parts necessary to their own production that they could purchase from. I didn't do my homework well. I gave them a list. One of the companies from my hometown of Albion was contacted by Dunlop, and the company said, why would you want to move to Michigan? Companies don't move to Michigan, they move out. Guess how long it took me to lose that prospect? Nothing will kill you more than something like that. Finally, if you're out talking to local businesses and you interview them about their problems, their opportunities, and all of that, you start to get some information, some intersections of information that can enable you to make some conclusions about what obstructs growth here locally, what can we do to make the process smooth and efficient. Throughout that process of retention and expansion, you're going to eventually come across areas in common between businesses, and that points you in a direction of problem-solving. Next is business attraction. There's been a fair amount of discussion about that in South Haven. I know I've talked to a number of people about it, a number of people on the council. Let's take a look at it. First of all, disclaimer, most of the work I did was business attraction, although after the example I just gave you, you better believe I did my retention work well after that. But at any rate, business attraction brings new jobs to a community, and with that fresh economic vitality, and I go back to Battle Creek for a second, used to be dominated by cereal production. Now it's dominated by Japanese auto parts makers, both original equipment manufacturers and aftermarket producers. And it probably came just in time, because we all know what Kellogg's doing right now. Job attraction or business attraction is extremely competitive. International investment capital is a finite resource. There's 23,000 organizations in North America chasing approximately 700 projects. You live in a region that is pretty much, the regional prosperity leader is southwest Michigan first, they do not do business attraction. It's something that you would have to do on your own. It is time-consuming, it takes a while before success. Again, I don't want to get too carried away with anecdotes, but while traveling once in Japan, a citizen in Battle Creek sent a letter to the paper, the local newspaper. Why is he traveling around Japan when I have potholes in my front street that could swallow a Volkswagen? It took six years to attract Nippon Denso. Many years later, I can say it's worth it, many years and $1 billion of investment, but it takes a long time and it takes a lot of patience. It is also incentive-based. If you're going to draw somebody from another community, you're going to be in a little bit of competition, and what's the responsible use of resources? How far do we go to attract a company before it becomes irresponsible? It needs to be something that is carefully analyzed, and a number of places in Michigan, U of M is maybe the best, have done a number of studies about how much a community given their per capita income, median per capita income or something like that, how much can they really afford to allocate in terms of relocations and incentives? You've heard of the Amazon headquarters type of thing. Communities just had to load the incentives on the table to even get a look from Amazon. It's unpredictable. You have to be ready 24 hours a day. At least once in my life, I was helping somebody in Japan calculate electricity rates at 3:30 in the morning. I can't do it at 3:30 in the afternoon. 3:30 in the morning makes it even more difficult. A lot of site selection work is done by consulting firms to preserve the confidentiality of the companies doing the looking. A lot of times, they'll just plain test you. I did an interim CEO position for an economic development organization not far from here, and the first weekend I was there was Labor Day weekend, and on that Friday, a site selection consulting company contacted us and said they wanted a proposal by the following Tuesday. And one of the staff members said, we don't work on weekends. And I said, you do now. I'm going to be here all weekend, so. It's those kinds of challenges and the unpredictable nature of attraction, you've got to be there at the convenience of your client, whether you like it or not. It's expensive. A full-time economic developer on city staff's going to cost you 75 to 85 grand a year with about a 25% benefit package, probably an overall cost of somewhere in the vicinity of 150,000 to 175,000 a year. If the person works directly for the city, you are subject to Freedom of Information requests, and that may involve some sensitive prospect data. Companies do not like advertising that they are looking to move or something else. It alerts their competition, it alerts their suppliers, their customers, and maybe not in a positive way. So a fair, a fair amount of this has to be done, respecting confidentiality of the site selector. It requires assets, and I've already said, available shovel-ready sites, workforce development strategies, capacity in public services. If Randall's Beans came to South Haven, would our solid waste processing capability be able to handle a challenge like that? All of those things need to be known to be effective in business attraction, but I'm saying three to five years at a bare minimum if you're, if you want to do this or if you're going to do this. Another strategy is small business development, and any economic developer that tells the truth will tell you that they love and they hate small business development. They love it because small businesses create. The majority of the jobs in the U.S., and they're especially effective in rural areas like ours. We don't like it because it's turbulent. 80% of small businesses die in the first one to five years of their existence, and that's why it's called the Valley of Death. It's labor-intensive. Against those odds, 80% failure rate, you're going to spend a lot of good effort trying to produce a few good jobs, and more than once, the thought's going to cross your mind, geez, might I be spending my time better by trying to attract a manufacturer with 200 jobs rather than, you know, one, one small business after another? Economic developers don't like it because the job quality. The new jobs are fragile, compensation may not be competitive with existing employers, which means they're going to have trouble drawing labor. There are some employee ownership possibilities that can blunt the difficulties of a new job created by a small business, and I'll get into that a little bit, just touch on that and things that can be done, but overall, the jobs you're creating are not that high quality. You hope they grow to a higher quality, and in those cases that survive, they generally do, but the survival rate is bad. It's compatible. One of the reasons why I like it in South Haven is you have a retiree pool of people here with successful careers, personal wealth, and time on their hands, and they've done some pretty good work with small business development here in this area. The South Haven Region Business Hub primarily volunteers with people with pretty successful backgrounds and, and time on their hands to lend a hand to a small business that might benefit from somebody who's had a great deal of experience running a business or a portion of it. Targeting, a reason why we like it. It enables a community development approach. It directs resources to the underserved. We just recently completed, that is, with the South Haven Region Business Hub, an application to the Minority Business Development Administration for funding to enable an incubator counseling program for small businesses in the greater South Haven area. I wrote pretty much the narrative for the grant, but it was filed by, by an organization out of Kalamazoo working with the South Haven Region Business Hub. But of their 16 clients, interestingly, all 16 of them are socially, economically disadvantaged individuals. One of them is a fully certified technician in HVAC systems. All he needed was somebody with some business expertise to get behind him and advise him and guide him through the process, and, and he is in the process of building a business. Small business development can be exclusively private sector-driven, and to some extent it is here in South Haven, again, with that pool of retirees that have been helping out. There's been some pretty sophisticated assistance given to businesses that could use it. Now, I mentioned all the difficulties here. There was a community in Colorado, Littleton, back in the early 2000, developed something called Economic Gardening, and what that was, was a comprehensive program of small business development. You place barriers or guide rails to keep them from failing. You help them with exports if they have created or developed a product or service that is exportable. Basically, do everything you can to make that valley of death something that they fly over and don't fall in. It is a comprehensive community strategy, and it's been duplicated in a number of different places across the country. Tourism. Here I'm going to be singing to the choir a little bit. Tourism, job growth, have stable predictable jobs, even though you go down a couple of lines there and look at job quality, they may not pay as well, and I think we've, we can see evidence of that, but part-time or seasonal jobs do match the employment needs of our young people, those, those going off to school, and we can talk about that a little bit more in a second, but we know from April to October that there are going to be a lot more jobs in South Haven that there are, than there are. than there are times outside that frame. Tourism brings in new money. We've seen from the VNC that average expenditure per day is about $190. All levels of government benefit from those taxes. Compatibility, and we spend enough time on this issue when it comes to city problems, but compatibility between visitors and long-term residents may be tested from time to time. And we see a lot of that under the short-term rental situation. A tourism community is a community that does assist in business attraction. Industries prefer to locate in communities that do have tourist attractions. The one German company that we've been able to attract in the past four years came here precisely because they had spent their vacation here and fell in love with the community. And I think there's a little bit of strategy in that whole approach there. Haven't gotten a whole lot of, I guess, positive feedback on it, but why couldn't the Visitor Bureau for a period of time run a campaign that says, "If you like visiting here, you love living here"? And, you know, even if you get just one in 1,000, it's a victory for the community and it doesn't dull the numbers of tourists coming in. So I've kind of agitated for that a little bit as part of our overall economic development program. And I think that Visitor Bureau is in a great position to provide convincing information to people that if, in fact, they want to come to South Haven, it's a great place to live and work. Tourism helps support community businesses. And the thing I've learned in some of our recent deliberations is not many towns the size of South Haven have a Meyer, a Walmart, and an Aldi. Another strategy is a form of business attraction, home-based businesses, remote work, or what we call the "anywheres," our prime target. Anywheres are people who can work from anywhere. Graphic arts designers, writers, any number of people who only need a modem and a computer to do their work. Retirees. Communities actually have attraction strategies for retirees. The Village has got started on a marketing strategy. There's 85,000 people living there now. And traditional economic development theory says that if your community is getting older, if it's aging, that's a bad thing. I think South Haven defies that rule. South Haven attracts, as I've said in the small business section, healthier, wealthier retirees than we've ever seen in our country's history. They have more time on their hands than we've ever seen. They're quite capable of playing a very positive and healthy role in community economic development. And we shouldn't think of them as a bad thing because they're not young. They are a potential source of great knowledge and wealth for any community that's serious about pursuing economic development. Finally, we have cocooners, families from urban areas that relocate to rural areas. And we've seen a little bit of that in the COVID situation and the abundance of Illinois license plates in southwest Michigan over the past two or three years. As far as remote work attraction is concerned, these are stable, predictable jobs. They are high-quality jobs. They usually pay very well. These are professionals that we're talking about. This kind of attraction work is amenities-driven. And I think when it comes to amenities, South Haven is on steroids as far as these people are concerned. Everything they want is here, a densely populated, walkable, safe, clean, and accessible community. It is very attractive. And eight coffee shops for a city of 4,000 people. The infrastructure is right. Your internet is strong enough. It can always be improved, but it's strong enough now that if somebody really wanted to live here and work here using the existing system, they can do it. You have one of your local residents with the Think Bar, who she is thinking in this direction, that we need to be working on attracting remote workers more. One thing that I would like to point out is this area of climate cities. And this is kind of a marketing campaign. It was actually initiated by the city of Duluth, Minnesota, which is far enough up there that most people don't want any part of it, but I'm familiar with it, having worked at Great Lakes Orferrators through college. It's a remarkable city, what they've done, changing themselves from a steel town to a healthcare, highly educated town. But they've developed a strategy called Climate Cities. And what they do is build condos on spec, and then they go out and find people in the southwest and the western United States to occupy those condos. Move here, escape the heat and the drought. We've got plenty of water and we have plenty of coal. But it is a strategy that I think fits South Haven quite well. I already mentioned job quality being excellent. It's compatible largely, although as you've tossed around some considerations particularly involving short-term rentals, they are, in fact, businesses. You may want to try and zone businesses a little bit, but don't zone them to the extent that if somebody wants to work out of their home and create advertisements for somebody in Chicago, the zoning regulations don't prohibit that kind of activity. Support services are readily available through some of the amenities that we've already talked about. Attracting remote workers supports community development because it's going to force us to look at our housing options harder, be more inventive in ways to provide new housing. And if we can begin to fill up some of the vacant houses in neighborhoods, we're ensuring some neighborhood stability. So there is, I think, a lot that's positive about this particular strategy. And it doesn't cost an awful lot either. Other considerations. What shape strategy? Where are points of effort? We have a good infrastructure, but we should always, I think, be in the state of mind where we want to provide the highest quality municipal service for the most competitive of prices. Gateways. And again, I noticed in the council priorities, there was a lot of discussion about landscaping, and you are right on target. The gateways to the city are the points of first contact. They generally color the overall perceptions that the individual has toward the rest of the community. So if those gateways are clean, well-maintained, and attractive, you're off on a very good foot with the new visitor. Role of a city administration is, needs to be supportive of growth. And again, work with you closely in making this community clean, safe, and accessible. Customer service, which I think you do very well. I've heard a lot of feedback about that. It's already a strength, but it's something that works really well with the citizens, and particularly your employer community. If we play to South Haven's strengths, small business development, remote business attraction are probably two strategies that ought to be focused on. But one of the things that's always kind of mesmerized me a little bit is that the political boundaries don't make any sense for economic development. You have far more in common with St. Joe or even Sagatuck than you do Matteawan or Pawpaw. It seems to me the geo-economics of South Haven run north and south along the lake shore with other lake shore communities and not necessarily east or west. There's a great deal of difference between Sagatuck Douglas and Plainwell Otsego, but they're in the same county. So area positioning is pretty important here. And we'll talk about Market Van Buren a little bit and what the options might be with that. But the city has done a great job, I think, with customer service. One of the people from Gull Lake Marine told me that they have never experienced such a high level of service or response, immediate response to their issues as they have from this city. And that's awfully good marketing for you. More things to consider in strategy development. Economic development, and I've already made this point, can be expensive. Whatever you do, it's got to be sustainable. And one suggestion is 85% of site selection consultants start their research on the internet. And we already have a page on the city website, but keeping that page fresh, filled with information, particularly positive things that happen here in the city, is a way to maintain presence without spending a great deal of money. This is being done now, but it can always be improved. And places like Oklahoma City have outcompeted places like Dallas and Denver just because people were able to go on the Oklahoma City website and find everything they needed within about 40 minutes in terms of information. We can do that. That's a doable thing, and it doesn't cost a lot of money. Economic development must be long-term. And I made that point with business attraction. You have to be in it for the long haul. No sooner do you close up shop than 48 hours later, somebody's going to show up looking for you with money in their pockets. So if you make that commitment, be prepared to stick with it. Available industrial sites and workforce development seem to be at the top of site selectors' list. We've got some issues that we've got to work on there. We've got to identify more sites. When I was in Fort Custer Industrial Park, a company would come to me and say, "We need 10 acres." I had maybe five options I could offer them. We have one here at this point in time. So wherever land's available and suitable for business development, we ought to be looking So starting to wrap this up a little bit. You currently pay Market Van Buren about $11,000 a year and have some board representation, but are you getting what you pay for? Can this be expanded to something a little bit more strenuous and enduring? If it can't, then I think you can do economic development in the city of South Haven cost-effectively by combining a hybrid or creating a hybrid customer service economic development position. A lot of company information or information that companies will seek will be available at your city just as normal practice. We have somebody who's able to communicate that out in a responsive way, a customer-responsive way. We're in pretty good position. And you already do this pretty well. So, you know, if you had somebody like a Sue Brock on economic development steroids, you'd have your situation pretty well covered. Finally, a part of the important strategy is, you know, as long as your city administration is economic development-oriented and they're working for a growth-friendly community, that'll go a long ways. It has with Gull Lake Marine. And I think when you talk to them, if you ever have the opportunity, solicit some feedback as to their dealings with the city. Finally, I've got some questions, but I just wanted to address a couple of things in the council, city council priorities. Some of this we've just completed, investigate increasing staff, attracting retaining business. You've got attracting a tech company, which is not an easy thing to do. A lot of tech companies are grown, are homegrown, and eventually branch out. But where are you going to put them? Where's the university or the research institute that they may be working with? Those kinds of issues will come up with a tech-based company. Think big. I've got a couple of big ideas, maybe. You have maritime training here, navigation training. You have maritime technology, which was something that has been developed just recently with the city working with Lake Michigan College. Interesting that Michigan ranks in the top five states in boat registrations and in the bottom 10 in preparing people to work on those boats. There are 37 marinas within 30 miles of South Haven, and there is no program for training We have just got that off the ground with Lake Michigan College, but additional work needs to be done. I think we need to go into the public schools and recruit kids for possible careers through the Vo-Tech people and into Lake Michigan College. But there's a very, very serious demand for skilled technicians. We have, I think, now a leg up on the rest of lake shore communities in southwest Michigan because of this training. Eventually, Lake Michigan College will spread it out as they should. But a maritime navigation and technology training institute would fit very well within the concept of port development here. And, you know, off-season, you're training people. So there's really no off-season. One season you're working, the next season, or yeah, the next season you're training to handle that work. Another big idea, and it's in your strategic economic development plan, I can't get over it, I think it's a great idea. The Surratt Public Library in Surratt, California. Library doesn't do it justice. It's a high-tech information center that draws hundreds of people from a radius of 90 miles. And the time I was there, 200 computer stations within the facility, and they were all occupied. And then finally, another big idea. There is an Israeli company working in Detroit, and they have worked on M21 up in the Ada area. But they put coils into the pavements of roads that enable electric vehicles to recharge when they're driving along the road. First city that does that end-to-end is going to benefit beyond their wildest dreams in terms of our transition to electronic vehicles. By the way, maritime training, electronic vehicles are coming, and we need to begin preparing our technicians to handle that kind of power source. So I think that pretty much covers it. I'll try and handle any questions that the council may have.
I have a question. Do you have any thoughts on the attainable housing issue?
I think we've got to do everything we can think of and even more to try and crack that nut. One of the things that, see, I'm a consultant, so I've got a little bit of wiggle room here. But I thought it might be nice if we could get maybe short-term rental people to sit down and say, "Amongst your users, are there maybe four or five houses that may be sold or that the owners no longer want to use for short-term rental or that the owners want to get rid of? Can we buy those houses and market those houses to the remote-based business people?" If we're successful in doing something like that, you've got a blueprint that's very, very attractive to foundation funding because you're rebuilding neighborhoods, you're doing charitable work. That kind of activity sets the city up well for a number of funding options.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Have you worked with the surrounding townships and as far as space goes for attracting different sources?
We have. With, obviously, the charter township of South Haven. I'm an advocate of the 425 agreements where you and the township get together on a piece of border property and use it for a common purpose. Housing would be a great project to do there. You can incentivize it. I think physical location might be a bit of an issue, but some thoughtful people can probably come up with... probably come up with decent locations. I know that we've looked at maps with Ross, and I think the position of the township right now is, well, we already have at least one agreement with you in place, and the land has yet to be fully utilized. We would need to pick that end up. But the township is hurting for lack of housing, too. I mean, this is a unifying issue, I think, amongst the city and its township, surrounding townships. So it's important. I think we've got to turn over every possible stone or rock we can, looking for an answer if it involves inviting somebody in town to do an experimental project. And there's a lot of that going on, although the housing products are not exactly what you'd want to see on one of your favorite streets. But it is a very, very serious problem, and it is affecting a community's ability to grow, and I think we've got to pay full attention to it.
Thank you.
Jim, you had said something about Market Van Buren County doesn't get involved in, like, new business attraction.
Southwest Michigan first.
Okay, southwest Michigan first. And so are they just involved with just, like, growing existing businesses?
Retention and expansion, pretty much. Think of anything else? I don't think so.
I know that Market Van Buren's trying to start the site selection work, but I also know there's a lot of work that has to be done. I think he's just starting it now. Zack Morris has.
Yeah, I think I get confused sometimes between southwest Michigan first and Market Van Buren.
That's not a good thing. They should be distinct. Each one should have a message for you that differentiates them.
Yeah, thank you.
I have one more question. A lot of the ideas that you gave us tonight are, like, super progressive and kind of groundbreaking in a way, like, you know, the electric vehicle recharging road coils. And I feel like sometimes it's easy to meet resistance for those ideas that are outside of the box. Is there any advice that you would have to kind of help create that change, even if there might be some resistance to it?
Well, I think anytime you unveil a new idea before a community, you better be well-prepared and you better anticipate as many different questions as you can. And you might as well anticipate some opposition, even if it's the best idea on earth, because people, in many cases, do not want changes that affect them directly. So with respect to the three things that I identified, I think one of them is it could be the result of a natural progression, and it won't break anybody's heart, being the center of maritime navigation and technology training. That's good for everybody, I think. And certainly, if we can channel it right so that some of our young people in school right now, who are thinking about careers that might not involve a college education, can nonetheless find the training and skill development that enables them to have a family-supporting wage in South Haven. The electric road technology is so new that, you know, I'm totally incapable of anticipating every problem that would come up with it. But since we seem to be making this transition as a country and as a world, away from fossil fuels, towards electronic power, this seems like something that ought to be done, and it seems like something that would have a home as soon as people could get the resources together to finance something like that. You've talked to staff, again, beginning in June and July, to look at the roads, and this might be an opportunity to do a little digging and see what it might cost you. I mean, even Phoenix and Broadway, if you could just do those, probably make a great deal of difference in terms of attracting and retaining people to South Haven. So my advice is to be as well-prepared and to try and anticipate everything as much as you can, because sure enough, something will come out of left field and catch you by surprise.
Always does. Any further questions? Thank you, Jim.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I hope it helps.
Well, that brings us to consent agenda, item number eight, consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda, items A through G.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. This is a roll call vote.
Onuki?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes. And a quick note on F there for the people on Lee Street, that does involve resurfacing your street.
That's correct.
Lee's one of those streets that really needs it. So that brings us to new business. Item number nine, the city council will be asked to consider the following actions regarding the mobile food vending ordinances. We will get to a public hearing, that's item A. Then item B, consider adoption of an ordinance to amend sections 201 dot dash 13, 701, 901, 1101, and 1107 of the South Haven zoning ordinance to regulate mobile food vending units, also known as food trucks. Item C, consider adopting an ordinance to repeal sections 14 dash 44.1 through 14 dash 44.8 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances. Add new language entitled "mobile food vendors" consisting of sections 14 through 64 through 14, oh, that's 14 dash 64 through 14 dash 70 to Chapter 14 of the South Haven Code of Ordinances, and amend sections 58 dash 83, now that one might be through, of the South Haven Code of Ordinances to regulate food trucks and other mobile food vending units. And finally, item D, consider adopting Resolution Number 2023 dash 07, a resolution approving fees and setting the maximum number of permits issued annually under the city of South Haven's mobile food vending ordinances. So I'd like to do, if the council is supportive, a motion for items B, C, and D.
Make a motion to approve and consider items B, C, and D as read regarding zoning ordinance and code of ordinances and adopting the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, so the council's willing to entertain that. So in this case, now I would like to open the public hearing so we can get public comment on this.
Make a motion to hold, open the public hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and supported, all in favor of opening the public hearing. Please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the public hearing is now open. Typically, though, we usually start with city staff, give us a little definition and explanation before we dig deep into this.
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate the opportunity to bring this back before you. As many of you will remember from several other conversations we've had about this ordinance amendment, we are discussing a proposed amendment that would change the existing regulations of food trucks and other mobile food vending units in the city of South Haven. For just a very brief summary, I would just like to highlight that on February 6th, city council made a motion to send their proposed changes to the mobile food vending ordinance back to the planning commission. Those changes were discussed at the planning commission level on March 2nd. The planning commission ultimately made a motion to acknowledge receipt of the proposed language, send it back to city council, but stand by their original recommendation. Now that the planning commission has provided feedback on the planning commission, or excuse me, on the city council's proposed draft, it is brought back before you all, and it would be appropriate for you all to consider adoption and put that in place for this summer season. I'm not going to go back through the different impacts of this amendment, just because we've discussed that with you all three or four times at this point, but I am happy to answer any questions or go through that, if that is something you all would like. But ultimately, as you all have seen, there are several different actions that staff is seeking this evening. If this is something you all would like to move forward with after the public hearing, there is a zoning ordinance amendment that would need to be adopted, a regulatory code ordinance that would need to be adopted, and then a resolution that would set the fee and the maximum number of permits. So assuming you all would like to move forward with the package that we put together with you several months ago, those three different actions would need to be taken, or you could conceivably do them together.
Okay. Any further?
No. But I haven't answered any questions.
All right, thank you. At this time, then, we would like to get comments from the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes to share your thoughts on mobile food vending units, mobile food vending ordinances. Seeing none. Okay, seeing none, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close.
I'm sorry. I would accept a motion.
And I'll second that motion.
Okay, so it was made by Steve and seconded by George. All in favor of closing the hearing, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, then what questions do council members have?
I guess I have no questions. I just, this is what we sent to planning commission. Now it's back to us. So in my mind, this is just what we had asked for before, so I have really no issues with it.
Let us show you, okay. Questions or comments?
I do have a question about people not living in South Haven operating food trucks. Where are we standing with that?
I can't regulate. We cannot disallow people who do not live here. So if they are one of the first 10 people to go get the permits, we have to by law allow that. There's nothing that we can do to restrict that.
So basically, it's first come, first served.
It is first come, first served.
And it's 10.
That's the limit in the resolution. If council would like to see that changed, moreover, since it's a resolution, it's easier to change than the ordinance. So if council, after, you know, several months, and we've already got the 10, and we're not seeing the number of food trucks, council can increase the number of permits if it so desires, very easily.
Did we also, did we change the time, or is it still? I know that was something we talked about.
The hours of operation was something that was discussed. The proposed ordinance amendments would expand the hours of operation from what is currently 8:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. And the reason for that was there was some discussion around, what if there's a food truck that wants to sell coffee and donuts or some kind of breakfast food?
Why did you have any?
No, I think I'm good. Thanks.
I don't have any questions either. So we made the motion as all's one, so we can...
I'm comfortable doing them.
Okay, then we prefer a roll call vote?
We can do a roll call vote.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote then.
Onuki?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes. Okay. That brings us to item number 10. The city council will be asked to consider the following actions regarding the 2023 beach safety updates. We're going to have consider adoption of the updated Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan and the consider approval of the purchase of a new 2023 Kawasaki Mule FXR with a street legal package from Van Der Zee Motorplex at the cost of $21,364 from the motor pool fund. Take those separate or together?
I would like to do them separate.
Okay. If you care to make a motion for either one.
I will move to approve the purchase of a new 2023 Kawasaki Mule FRX with a street legal package from Van Der Zee Motorplex and the cost of $21,364 from the motor pool fund.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and supported. Kate, do you want to give us some background on what this is and why we need it?
Sure. So we have two actions in front of the council tonight. One is to approve the Kawasaki Mule, and two is the update, the Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan. We're also giving a beach safety update, just to kind of let you know where things are standing. When we talked to you in November, we were recommending a number of different things. We do have a Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan that came out of a lawsuit of a drowning. And what we have done in that Marty Jordan Plan is we've codified a number of things that the city does, is not only required to do, but are also considered best practices. We've done that with the Beach Safety Ad-Hoc Committee, gave us a number of recommendations. And what we have tried to do is implement those with different signage, new signage, as also being just very proactive about what we have going on on our beaches. We know that's a popular amenity. We have a lot of people who are coming to our beaches who may not know much about them. A couple of things to understand, what we're doing here today also is that we have worked for a long time with Shays with implementing this beach safety program, and most of that was just updating the flags and having some staff out there. And currently, that's one of the Kawasaki Mules that we do have currently. What we are looking at doing is bringing in the Shays program, just bringing it in-house for two reasons. One, we'd like to cover them under our liability coverage with MMRA. But two, what we have been noticing is that with increased usage of our beaches, we're seeing that we have good practicing with our number of ordinances and signage out there, but we do not have the enforcement arm. And that's really what this was trying to do, is trying to marry an existing program with some tools to increase our footprint out on the beaches, if you will, and give us more opportunities to be there, give education, be onsite with maintaining the number of structures that are out there. We have our pier life, we have our throw bags on the pier, we have now all of our 14 posts, and then we have two lifeguard loaner stations. All that means that we need to maintain them and have them in good working order every day, each day. We also have now this new beach safety ordinance that went into effect last year, which was very effective, but also that means that we have to ensure that people are following the rules, and a lot of it is education. There's been a number of times, and many people got many, many warnings before they received a citation, because there's such a significant education practice here. So as we're developing, bringing this over from Shays into the city, we have Matt Day, who was a city employee, who has been promoted to a beach safety superintendent. Matt had three years with the city, I'm sorry, with Shays doing this program, but worked as basically a manager for that program for two years. So he has significant experience with the beach safety program with Shays that now the city would be importing in. I do want to talk about the fact that we would like to expand the footprint of the beach safety folks out there, and that's why we're asking for the Kawasaki Mule. Currently, the city has two mules, but one of them is not street legal, has no turn signals, it has no brake lights, and it's not really very safe to operate. The idea would be to have a Kawasaki Mule on each beach and be available to be there. We do know that our north and south beaches are the main draw. We do know that that's where a lot of people go, and that's also where the pier structures are. So that's where we're trying to focus our efforts. I did want to say that we've had a number of people email in, some very good suggestions, and again, this is an evolving plan. This just kind of takes us to the update of where we are, kind of looking at the signage that was recommended and what we have done so far to update that. Two things, though, I did want to make note in the plan is that, one, we did need to get the structural current signs in there. I do know that those are deployed out on the beaches, if not, we do have them. So we'll be deploying those and then putting that in the plan. But also, I wanted to talk about the recommendation that has changed from last year. Last year, I was suggesting that we follow the state of Michigan's flag system, which called for a double red to a red. We've really chewed this one over with staff for some time, and we've also reached out to the DNR to learn more about how they're implementing this plan. And really, they would only close the beaches on a double red flag. Two things concern, well, a number of things concern me and the staff, is that, one, the pier pole, or the poles, the flag poles that we have right now do not accommodate a double red flag. So we'd have to restring them and do significant work to bring those up to speed. Two, we have done a really good job of messaging here that if it's a red flag, you don't go in. That's quite contradictory with the state of Michigan's flag system that says a double red now is not to go in, but a red flag, you possibly could go in. I think that really counters all the messaging that we have done for the last two years of really trying to promote the red flag means dangerous waters and they should not go in. So I thought of that messaging. While I agree there needs to be continuity amongst the state and municipal beaches, right now, it's a suggestion, it's a good idea, but I have a hard time confusing that messaging because we did such a good job of training a lot of folks that red flag waters are not good waters. So those are some of the reasons why we kind of backed off from that recommendation, or just recommending to stay with the red, yellow, green flag, showing that, you know, really no water is safe water. You still have low hazard, moderate risk, and high risk, and high risk is when we close our beaches. So that's the update mainly, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Okay. Well, so far, we have a motion for the Mule, and we haven't wrestled with the beach safety plan yet. I would take public comment on just the purchase of the Mule. Kate gave us everything, because she's so good. Any thoughts on the Mule? Okay, there we go. And your name and address.
Kate Engelbrecht, 125 Elkenberg Street.
I think it is too soon to deal with the mule. I think that the money spent on the mule would be better served trying to establish a lifeguard program. And I would hope that you hold off on it for now, please.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Good evening.
Hi, Lisa Vec, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I also think that voting on the mule before we have a plan for the beach is kinda the hor, whatever that expression, cart before the first-
Cart before the horse. Good evening.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I would just like confirmation of receipt of my email and attachment from earlier today. It addresses both, but it did specifically address the Kawasaki and whether it's right to vote now, or hold off until we actually know that we'll have the staffing to even use it. Thank you.
Okay.
And if you could confirm that and have the minutes-
I did see your email, and I did read your email. I can't speak for anyone else.
At the minute, we'd like receipt of my email and questions therein.
I'm sorry I interrupted you. I did see it, and I read it, I can't speak for everyone else.
I also received the email and read it.
Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. I, I agree with everyone else, I'm just making it known that many of us here feel that we should hold off on the approval of the purchase until we have the safety plan in place. So, thank you.
Okay. Having heard that from the public, and having heard what Kate had to say about the beach plan, I don't know if anyone is willing to make a motion to consider the updated Marty Jordan Plan at this time.
I, I will make a motion to adopt the updated Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan. I think it's a, it's an improvement, and I think we, it's an evolution. It's gonna, we're gonna make changes later on, but I think this is an improvement in safety over last year. Second.
Okay, so this has been moved and supported. Kate has already kinda given us everything. Is there anything else you wanna circle back to just touch on before we get some public comment on the beach plan?
No, I think you said everything I need to on this beach safety plan. I would say that the Kawasaki Mule, it's been some time since we've been able to get Kawasaki mules in, and, you know, if council does not want to go with it, we still have our, our existing Kawasaki, we would not probably use the, the non-street legal one. But I do want to caution, there's around 37,000 hours that's on the existing Kawasaki, and it needs a lot of maintenance to keep going every day. So I'm just saying that when you look at your, when I look at our, our assets that can be deployed, I also want reliability. And if we are looking, I have no guarantees on who's gonna be coming forth, but I also know that this is how we're trying to expand the program, and we're trying to be very active and aggressive with having bodies on the beach to ensure that people are, one, being educated about the conditions on the water, also having eyes on the conditions, and also being present if people are not following the rules as they should.
Okay. And because we have two separate motions, I think we can still vote them separately, so, okay. So then, this time, because now we, the council is willing to consider the, the beach plan, I would now like to get the public comment on the beach plan itself. And it, as always, your name and address, and sorry, sorry to make everyone get up and down, and-
Good exercise.
Kate Engelbrecht, 125 Elkenberg Street. As I read through the plan, I see some things that concern me. I believe it needs to be reviewed further. One of the things I don't understand is the life preserver things that are on the pier are only up from April 15th to October 15th. I believe it has been brought up suggesting that those be out year round, because people are on the pier year round, and can be swept off the pier year round, or be foolish and land in the water year round. I don't understand why that wasn't changed. If it's a cost issue, I think potentially saving a life is worth the cost of having to update the life preservers periodically. I'm not sure exactly what the comments and the plan for having more staff on the beach will be. Are they, are they trained to observe for rip tides? Are they high enough in the air in a lifeguard station that they can observe to see if there's a rip current out there? It doesn't seem like a plan has been made for that. The signs that are up, I believe, have proven to be ineffective, obviously because of the tragedies that we've had. The improvements that have been suggested for the signs are not gonna make a significant improvement. People don't read them, people don't pay attention to them. Once they're on the beach and pass the signs, it's out of their mind. Once they're in the water, they're not looking at the flags. Depending on where they are on the beach, the flags may not be easily visible. We need to have a program where there are lifeguards, to keep our visitors, our residents, our tourists, our children, our grandchildren, safe. This plan does not address that. It does not even remotely come close to trying to address what has happened in previous years, the tragedies. And I feel that something needs to be done to improve that, whether it's going back to the drawing board, whether it's getting people who are perhaps more experienced in coming up with beach safety plans involved. Something needs to be done before this is adopted. And just saying we'll adopt it for now, and we can always change it later, means maybe it'll be changed next year, maybe it'll be changed two years from now, but it certainly won't be changed for this spring, and that's unacceptable. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I've written as well, but, oh, Nancy Nat, 125 Elkenberg. I think the 2023 beach safety program has many things that need to be fixed before we adopt it. One of the, just in general, I feel that there should be a written procedure for flag designation. In any job that I've ever had, you followed a procedure book, you had sign-off sheets, you had quality control, there were, there were many mechanisms set in place that people had to follow. And I have not seen anything like that for our flag designation. Conditions warranting colors for rip currents and structural currents, how do, how do we measure rip currents and structural currents? Is there a mechanism for how those are measured, and at what point does that trigger a yellow flag or a red flag? I don't know. Are the conditions reviewed during the day? Do, do we look at the conditions on the water every two hours, every hour to, and who's in charge of making sure that gets done? And again, is that a sign-off sheet where someone has to take responsibility for that and follow a certain quality control procedure mechanism? The signage for the flags, regardless of the verbiage, they need to be larger, and they need to be closer to the beach. When you pull into the parking lot, you are overwhelmed with parking signs, life jackets, which I think are great, but there's so much information that a tourist, or anybody for that matter, with a group of kids trying to get everything down to the beach, you could easily pass the rip current information and the flag designation and just keep going. So I think that needs to change. The life rings need to be out all year long. I don't understand this October to April thing. Boys along the pier, buoys along the pier need to be a different color to designate areas of no swimming. I, I think that needs to be done this year, and I also feel that the 50-foot delineation needs to be wider along the pier because of the structural currents that have caused the drownings from last year, which I don't wanna get into, it's just too sad. I do have a lifeguard proposal that I'd like to present to the council quickly. I would like to ask that we at least try a program where we put lifeguards on one of the beaches. And this would provide the option for people coming to South Haven to choose either going to the beach that has lifeguards or not, which I think would be a good thing. South Beach is not as big as North Beach, you would probably only need three lifeguard chairs. It wouldn't require a lot of people to be hired. Training could be provided by trained professionals from Great Lakes Surf and Rescue. Current rate for lifeguards, just a lifeguard, not a supervisor, is $25.50 an hour, which is, I think, a pretty good hourly wage for somebody for a summer job. And everyone keeps saying, I hear, these young high school kids, if I was in college, I would take that job. If I was in my twenties or thirties, and, you know, still able to pass all of the criteria, I would still want that job. So I don't know why we keep limiting it to high school age people. And honestly, eyes on the ground are the only way we're gonna rescue people. You can't rescue people by calling a 911 box. We have proven that that does not work. By the time Shays gets to the area, the people are deceased. So the only answer to save people is lifeguards, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Lisa Vec, 879 Monroe Boulevard. I agree with everything that the two women before me said much more eloquently than I can. I do really agree that the flag, I mean, the signs are not working. I've been in South Haven for 35 years. I did not know about those signs, and I go down to the beach all the time, I'm a good swimmer, but I'm also, grew up on the East Coast, and to me, it was, an ocean is dangerous, a lake is, you know, that's a piece of cake, until I started learning more. The lifeguards in the East Coast are very effective. When they wave their flags, and they have it down, and they only need a few, because they have their flags on there, and they talk to each other, and they can tell when it's dangerous instantly. Someone driving by once an hour, this or that, rip tides change just like that. I mean, you can be gone. And kids don't read, I mean, parents don't read, obviously I don't read, but, you know, a lot of the kids don't read, and so there's that aspect. The drowning last year was during a yellow flag that should have been red, probably, but you can't see, as someone pointed out, you can't see that from the ground, you can see that from a lifeguard station. I think we talk about jobs, you know, that would be a great school for lifeguard, it would be wonderful, some of the communities around would probably send their people here. It would be a great career for some people to be teaching going on, you know, they, they were a lifeguard, and then they teach the next generation, this and that. Those are jobs right there, and they're not high-paying jobs. And as the woman before me mentioned, you know, that's a pretty good price to save a life, I think. I think we really need to look at the sign thing and say, you know, this isn't working, I like the idea of testing it on one beach, and see how it goes. But saving a life is certainly worth a little more thought, and if we have to pay lifeguards, so be it, if it was your child, or your parent, or your son, anybody, you know, you'd wanna then fight for, let's fight for it before then. And the fines, I don't believe, you know, fining people after someone's dead, you know, doesn't do much, in my opinion. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi, Josie Dillon, 546 North Shore Drive. I, I concur that we should probably take a, a look at this plan as it stands right now, and see if we can make some additions. There were some good suggestions, I like the idea of a community forum, maybe just add to the plan. I know we can't solve the problem overnight, but at least try to add some, and expand this plan for this year, because, you know, this is the time, this is the night. Don't just pass it because it's there. It's not a horrible plan, but we can make it better. We have, you know, professionals and citizens who are interested in helping with this project, we could have a community forum. It sounds like Kate said that the language of the signage will be changed to appropriate rip current instead of tide, et cetera, and the structural currents, which is good, maybe, it's, it sounds like we need to take a look at placement so that the signs are visible on the beach. As stated in the, in the Marty Jordan Plan, they, they need to really be seen by parents with their kids. There's obviously been a problem in the past where they're not, and, you know, listening to Jim talk about attraction and retention earlier, it occurred to me that a really strong lifesaving program would be very attractive for this city. It's something we should look into. It doesn't have to all be done overnight, but at least look at starting to implement it. This should be, this should be a good paying job. This high school kids doesn't work out thing is a really old argument, it's weak, and it's, it's, it's not the solution. There are a lot of things between nothing and having a, you know, a huge program by this summer, but let's take a look at improving what we've got. Four drownings last summer is just way too, it's extremely alarming, everyone knows that. So I think it's a little premature to pass this tonight. Thanks.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. I just reiterate what I said before with regard to my letter, and support what's been said thus far. I think it's premature to take a vote tonight. There are too many unanswered questions that, depending on the answer, could really require modifications to the proposal. And without those hard questions answered, you are not doing justice to our community, our tourists, our development. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, I don't see anybody else. Council member comments, questions?
I have a question. Regarding the Kawasaki Mule coming out of the, the motor pool, being removed from Shays now, is that because Shays serves more than just the city?
So we have a Kawasaki Mule that the city bought, but has been stored and used by Shays. That would, it's still in the motor pool fund, that would not necessarily come out. The other Mule has been used mostly for parks, and again, that, I don't know yet what the plan is on that, or if there's any other way to be using that, if it can be used at the cemetery.
And then, can you speak a little bit to the references regarding the, the changes and procedures, if you will?
Sure, so really, we are importing-
Those are set from, through Shays in the past, correct?
That's correct. We're basically importing the, the, the program that Shays developed. Not only are we taking their guidelines and how they have been doing, they have daily sheets, they have logs, they have training that they've been giving to their, their folks that have been working for them, and of course, then we're also using somebody who's been working for that program and doing that program and managing that program now for the last two years. So we're importing a lot of the knowledge and doing everything pretty much that Shays will be doing, we're adding an enforcement component on top of that.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I don't have anything else.
I feel like, I like seeing improvements from last year, but I guess I was hoping for a little more public input, and I don't know if that would be in the format of a community forum or something like that. But I, I think we have such a wealth of resources and expertise out there, and even tonight, there have been really great suggestions that I'm not sure where the city stands on implementing some of them, like the year-round life preservers.
Actually, I can, I can answer that. There's this stuff called ice and snow that builds up on the pier, and I'm, I'm being a little facetious here, but when you put an asset, asset-
And I'm, I'm being a little facetious here, but when you put an asset, asset out there and you tell people that's there, you have to make sure that it's available. And right now, just putting a life ring out there and the rope, it's going to get iced up and it's going to be unusable. I would very much hesitate to say, yes, we have life rings out there without having a cabinet to put them in, without having, making sure that they're available year-round. So quite honestly, that was something that was not considered. I'm happy to look into that. We would, we do have some folks looking into it right now, but quite honestly, if you don't have the asset available and you tell people it's available, you're putting them at risk because you've told them it's there. If you can't make it available year-round, then you shouldn't have it out there. And that's a very good safety aspect. If it's not out there, again, that pier structure, I know people use it, but when you walk past all the yellow signs the city put out there because the Corps of Engineers took those away, it says, this is meant for a navigational structure only. This is to be entered at your own risk. Now, we have, when we know that there are more people out there to have those pier, those throw rings and the bags, but I really want people to understand, when we can have them and we can maintain them and we can make sure that they're usable, that's when we can put them out there year-round. So if we can find cabinets, and we have been looking, we have been working with Pam Ford with Safe Kids Greater South Haven, we've also been in contact with Heather Johnson Shape, we are working with stakeholders in the community. Maybe not everyone knows about that. Maybe we can work on a community forum. But again, we have to talk about the things that we are working on, but I can't put something out there if I know it can't be used. So that's why they're not out there year-round.
Okay. But yeah, I like that there's a possibility of getting a cabinet so that they can be. I feel like that's being proactive and moving toward the solution. And then, just as far as, for me personally, I have been on all spectrums of the lifeguard situation over the last few years, trying to think of whether that is a good fit for us. I wasn't on council the last time it came up, but I guess after last summer, I lean more toward having a conversation about that and seeing if it's a possibility at least. I would love for us to be able to talk about lifeguards here.
I was going to ask that question. Is that a possibility to hire not just students, like I heard someone say, but making it for college students or older people?
We don't have any restrictions on our, on our, on our seasonal positions, so anyone can be applying to them, provided that they can do the job. For, for the, for the beach enforcement position, I believe it just has to be, you have to be, you know, carry a certain amount of weight and be able to walk. Other than that, it's, there's no, there's nothing saying that you can't be a college student. And we are looking if you're, if you know anyone.
Oh, so you are looking?
We're still looking for that, as well as beach enforcement. Beach enforcement will be completely separate from the beach enforcement. Parking, I'm sorry, parking enforcement will be completely separate from beach enforcement. Parking enforcement will be in the downtown, as well as in the, in the beaches parking lot, but also in the other areas of the city. So beach enforcement is completely separate from parking enforcement.
Well, I do remember when we had lifeguards in town before, and a lot of what the lifeguards did was educational, advising people about the lake and the dangers of the lake. And it sounds like that will be something that will be gained with this program. I also am concerned about the timeframe. We, our next meeting's not going to be till April the 10th, and our next meeting after that is April 17th, and then you're into May. And, you know, I'm, I'm worried that we're gonna, we're gonna lose out on something that's a good improvement, striving to get to perfection, and I don't know if we're ever going to get there.
I share those concerns. In addition to the people that spoke this evening, we did get an email from Bobby Pratt from the Great Lakes Surf Rescue Program. I hope I had that name right. And Bobby was going to be here, but clearly he didn't make it.
He's here.
Oh, okay. I wish he'd have spoke during your turn. So Bobby brought up some great things, and Kate, you can help me with this. And I didn't have time to read the whole plan, but Bobby shared the concern about riptide and undertow being used, when we probably ought to say rip current. And so can we make sure we go through and fix that before-
Yes, and we did so today. We, we reviewed the plan that we have proposed, and only rip current is used there.
Okay.
I guess I didn't look for the, for the term undertow, but quite honestly, riptide doesn't affect, is not in the Great Lakes, so we, we use rip current and structural current.
Okay. And that was, the next one, Mr. Pratt mentioned, the difference between a rip current and structural current, but you were aware of that, and we're, we're signs are working on that. He shared some concerns about throw rings and Coast Guard approved ring, or throw bags and Coast Guard approved rings. And we've kind of talked about rings. I, actually, I remember, we had rings on the pier, and they used to say "South Haven" on them, and people would steal them for trinkets, souvenirs. And so that was an easy fix, took "South Haven" off of it. And so it sounds like the next fix, we need our boxes that make them weatherproof so we can have them out there longer. The other thing that Mr. Pratt mentioned was the double red flag. But you mentioned that already in your opening comments, that while the DNR does double red, they also do a single red, and during a single red, you can be in the water.
That's correct.
And we're trying to teach people, don't go in the water when it's red, any red, don't go in the water.
That's correct. At the, in talking with the DNR, when they do have a double red, they are planning on putting additional signage at the waterfront, and that's something else Shays tried to do last year, which is something I think is completely great. When you are closing the water, you want to give extra, you know, extra notification that the water is closed. And speaking with Matt Day, we'll have horn notifications when the flags are changed, but also when, when they are changing the flags and elevating them, they want to alert the people who are in the water who may not know the dangers. So all that's going to be the notifications that are on site.
Okay, good. And Mr. Pratt expressed some concerns about some of the safety equipment that Shays uses, but that was just a list of the things that we have.
That's right.
And we know Chief Hinz is not going to send our staff out without all the proper protection that they need. Okay. Good. And then I, George already, he's so good, he already hit on what I was worried about, that I still have a lot of concerns, but I don't, I want something in place before the beach system starts. For, and one of the big things that we heard a lot tonight was about the signs. It's, there's so many signs, and they're not always the best place. And one of the things we've talked about in the past, and, and so it boils down to education, we need to beef up our education program, having Matt and those guys down there. But, and we've talked about this before, but I don't really, haven't got it going, how we should have flyers that we give out to all the downtown merchants, so their stuff are in sacks, beach safety tips, placemats at the diners. And we don't have a lot of the diners anymore, but how about table tents? You know, how come, we should be printing those and getting those out to people. Holland did a public service announcement a few years back, extolling the dangers of, of the lake. And so hopefully, we can also continue with those. But like George said, I do want to make some progress tonight, and, but I don't want to let those educational things go either. Recently, just last fall, a local resident was in Greece and found, it was not a buoy, but like a floating device that you could hold on to. So if you were a swimmer in distress, you could grab it on there and tell safe, and tell help could get to you. And so we, I would like to explore those as well. So it sounds like we still have a lot of things we could work on, but I think we have to have something before summer gets here. Okay. So unless there's any other questions or comments from the council, why don't we start with, do we want to do a roll call? Do you have a preference? George nodded, and like I said, he's sharp, so let's deal with that. Let's start with A, considering adopting the updated Marty Jordan Beach Safety Plan under the roll call vote.
You got it. Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Onuki?
No.
And Arnold?
Yes.
Motion carries.
So then, item B, consider approval of the purchase of the new 2023 Kawasaki mule.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Onuki?
No.
Schlock?
Yes.
And Arnold?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. That brings us to item number 11. The city council will be asked to consider authorizing the use of a new vision, mission, and value statement. Kate, oh, it looks like Griffin's coming, too.
Well, I've got Griffin and Kim, who've been very instrumental with helping us distill this down, so I'm going to turn this over to them.
Good evening again, everyone. I'm going to go ahead and get us started, and then we do have Human Resource Director Kim Wise here to help answer any questions you all may have. But just as a little bit of background, over the last couple years now, or a little over a year at this point, we engaged Greg Gucho to come assist the city council in developing a vision statement, as it was one of the goals identified for fiscal year 2021, 2022. There's a little bit of a timetable included in your memo. I'm going to kind of go to the end of that and, and just go to, the last time this was brought before you all was October 3rd of 2022. The updated vision report was brought before city council, and no action was taken at that time. Over the, the last several months since October, the information gathered from the work with Greg was reformatted into the standards of excellence that we have brought before you all this evening. The intent is that these are clear, concise, inspiring, and usable statements that were based off of the roadmap presented in the reports that were developed with Greg Gucho. Our hope this evening is that city council will consider the new vision, mission, value statements, as well as new tagline and differentiation statement, so that they can be used for recruitment, onboarding, and other team-building related purposes moving forward. Kim and I are here this evening to discuss this any more or answer any questions, but I will stop there for now.
Okay. Do you want to take public comment on the, so if there's anyone here that would like to offer a comment on the new vision, mission, and value statement, we would love to hear from you.
Mary Hasley, 726 North Shore Drive. Just if you would recognize that I did email you last week, I believe Friday morning, about this very topic, especially with regard to how inconsistent actions have been with regard to matters over the last year resulting in two litigations. And I am waiting for comments from that communication also. So if the record would reflect that I submitted an email to city council and staff, and I'm waiting a response, I would appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I, again, I did see it and read it, but I only speak for myself. Any additional comments? Councilmember comments, questions?
This is just an internal, I mean, for HR specific-
Correct. This is, when I was at Bronson and at previous employers, we had a one-page document that we would carry with us or keep at our desk, that basically said, these are our standards, this is why we're here. It has to be short, it has to be concise, because if you, if it's long, then your employees are just going to put it on a shelf, they're not going to look at it. So it has to be something that they can keep with them, or, you know, at their desk, at their workstation. Again, needs to be short, clear, you know, talk about why we're here, our values. And this is a full-staff-wide project here. We worked with Greg, with all of the staff members, he came to our leadership retreat. So our staff has buy-in in this already. So I'm excited about being able to push this out and just really show it to the staff and get it going.
And one example of how it could be used is included in your packet. If you guys want to look at page 202 of your packet, or 201 and 202, there's a mock-up that was put together of what the standards of excellence-type document could look like, and as a way of, again, putting the work that was done with Greg and using that as the roadmap to some usable, concise, inspiring work.
I'm really happy that you got already a lot of user buy-in on this, and I, for one, would not want to go back on that. If they're, if they're saying this is what they want, it looks good to me.
And, and we need a motion. I think I glossed over that part. So we've got our information, so if, if the council is supportive, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to authorize the use of the new vision, mission, and value statements.
Second.
Okay. It's been moved and supported. Do we have any additional comments from the council? Questions from the council? All right, all in favor then, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? None. That one carries as well. Item number 12, the city council will be asked to consider approval of a commercial use license agreement with Bend Yoga LLC. I would entertain a motion.
I'll make the motion to approve the commercial use license agreement with Bend Yoga LLC.
Second.
It's been moved and supported. Kate?
Yes, this is, we're bringing back another commercial use, but this one is, again, a vendor that we've worked with last year. This is for yoga on the beach. I believe that they're limited to up to 50 persons at the south end of the north beach. It seemed like that went very well. We just had one hiccup where they kind of moved spontaneously, but I think we've cleared up any issues with that. The base fee is $157.50, as it has been for all the other commercial uses. And the only one that, the only kind of commercial uses that we're charging per, per event is just the wedding. So again, this will just be another use for this year with Bend Yoga.
Okay, very good. Were there any public questions or comments about this commercial use agreement? Okay, seeing none. Councilmember questions or comments?
Were there any problems with regular beachgoers, the public?
Not that it was brought to my attention.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, there was just that-
I can tell you, I attended beach yoga a few times last summer, and at the time they do it, well, they do it once in the morning, I think, in the morning, and then they have another one in the evening at that location in the beach. The only other thing that's out there is a beach cleaner, usually at that time, in the morning anyway, when I went, so.
All right. No other questions or comments then. All in favor of the commercial use license agreement with Bend Yoga, please say aye.
Aye.
Unopposed? None. That one carries as well. That brings us to item number 13. The city council will now receive an update from Police Chief Natalie Thompson. Welcome, chief. Thanks for staying late tonight.
So I apologize, I've got three separate sets of stats. So I'm going to start with the, the two year-end stats from last year. I've got December of 2022. So I'll just kind of go through those by, by topic here. We ended up with 441 arrests for the year. In comparison, the previous year, we had 227 citations and warnings for the year. We ended up with 1,685, and that is compared to 909 from the previous year. Foot patrol hours stayed pretty consistent. We had 408 compared to 401 the previous year. Our total calls for service for 2022 were 6,087. So if you look from the previous year, we had 4,042. So our, our calls for service are going up substantially in your, your packet there. If you want to go back to 2019, our total calls for service were 3,965. So you can see with same staffing levels, our, our calls for service are going up greatly. Just to break it down, for the city of South Haven, 2022, we had 3,812 calls, and then in the township, we had 2,275. So that equals that, that gray graph there for our total. The next couple pie charts you've got are citations from the previous two years, and then for, oh, I'm not, I'm my 2022. So for 2022 citations, I apologize, that's on your, your last page. It gets, it gets a total breakdown of what citations we wrote, and just a breakdown there from ordinances, moving traffic, traffic non-moving, parking, traffic warning, and golf carts. So that first packet just sums up last year. And then next, I've got, this is a running tally, this is January through February 28th. So this next packet is, since I didn't speak in January, this is January and February. We've got our, our top five offenses for the year so far, driving violations, obstructing justice, means some kind of warrant, some kind of court order violation, followed by assaults, retail frauds, and larcenies. For our person crimes for the year, we've had- For our person crimes for the year, we've had 15 assaults and then three sexual assaults. For property crimes for the year, our top property crimes, pretty consistent, are larceny and retail fraud. The rest of those are broken down. Burglary is home invasion. MDoP is damage to property. We've had one embezzlement, one counterfeiting, five frauds, motor vehicle crime, four, and then one robbery. And then our calls for service this year, as you can see, we've got the previous years on this chart. So far, we are up to 515 total, and that's 368 in the city and 147 in South Haven Township. For the year, January and February, we are up to 88 arrests, and we are up to 453 citations and warnings. Foot patrol hours so far, about 41 hours. Our complaints for the year are 279. Property checks, we've got 105. We haven't received any blight complaints as of yet for this year. And again, those are typically, we handle those for South Haven Township. The next pie chart is our 2023 citations so far, and we've, we've really been stepping up our traffic enforcement. And as you can see, the, the dark blue there are the traffic warnings, and then the orange are the, the traffic moving citations. So those are pretty consistent. And at the bottom so far, you can see in two months, we've written 157 traffic citations, and we've given 176 warnings in two months. So our officers are doing a very good job with that. And so far for the year, for January and February, out of our total assaults, we've had nine domestic assaults and six that were non-domestic. And I apologize, this is just a bit redundant, but I do have just stats for February. Again, probably won't go over all these, but these are contained in your, your January and February information. So when I get back to, once a month, I won't have these stacked together like this. Next, members of the South Haven Police Department, we are actively getting as much training as we can before summer. Our three newest officers will be going to required emergency vehicle operations training, and then also defensive driving training in April. Our in-house detectives are attending several classes, including a five-day homicide investigation school, and also use of forensic tools, which can aid in a variety of criminal cases. Two of our officers completed the field training officer program to help train new recruits upon being, being hired. Sergeant DeBoer, one of our night sergeants, recently completed command presence and has been enrolled in staff and command, which begins later this year. The entire department is training in use of control in addition to reviewing our revised policy, which we revised this month on the topic as well. And golf carts, March 15th, season started. Registration packets are available 24/7 from the information center at the police department. A copy of the golf cart ordinance is included in this packet and may be referenced for answers to any specific questions that anyone may have. And so far, I don't believe we've written any golf cart tickets. I haven't seen any. Been a little bit cold.
Any members of council have any questions for the chief?
Just say thank you for everything you and your staff do.
Thank you. Pass it on.
Chief Hens didn't know, and so I'm not expecting you to know. The uptick in all the calls, any guess why he's, you know, those, their, his side is so busy, and now you guys are so busy, just?
We've seen the steady rise through the years, but there was a giant jump from last year, so I, I don't know.
People just like coming here, apparently.
Yeah.
And don't always behave.
Exactly.
Okay.
I guess it's a good thing. I mean, I would like to think that people feel more comfortable in calling and reporting things, so. There's always different factors, but we've seen a little increase through the years, so I think it's, some of it's natural.
All right. Thank you.
Yep, thank you.
Thank you.
Then that brings us to item number 14. Citizens in the audience will be heard on items not on the agenda. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address, and you have five minutes to talk about anything we haven't talked about yet tonight.
Yeah, Howard Fink, 712 Old Town Road. Wasn't planning on saying anything. I'm the manager for Park Township, so your neighbor to the north. Just want to say thank you to Kate and Griffin and their team. We're here, Building Inspector and I, just observing the conversation around beach safety. We've also created a peer safety consortium, and South Haven is one of the leaders in looking at beach safety. We're also looking to do a beach safety program in addition to the safety consortium that we've created. And so we were here tonight to listen in and learn from you all, and again, just wanted to commend Kate and Griffin and their team that do the good work that you all are doing. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you. And hopefully if you come up with the silver bullet, you'll share it with us, and we'll do the same.
Yes, sir.
Hi.
Hi.
Heather Welsh Johnson, 931 South Haven Place. I created the nonprofit called SHAPE, South Haven Ambassadors Program in Education, this past summer. I put boots on the ground. I went out, I didn't get up during the agenda for the beach safety. I didn't realize, this is my first time. So, so with the education part that you guys were talking about, we...
Well, I have to, because we've covered that one.
Yes, so I, as SHAPE, have started with education, just taking flyers with rip current information, flag system information, out on the beaches, and just speaking with people one-on-one to get the information out there. We've received an overwhelming response from the community. I just took flyers out today with QR codes that listed things to do in South Haven on red flag days, and the community was really receptive on that. All of our business owners, all of our restaurants, all of our hotels, everybody was really excited about that. So we created the nonprofit organization named South Haven Ambassadors Program in Education Incorporated, or SHAPE for short, after the drowning of the Ohio man and the seven-year-old who drowned last summer. Our mission with SHAPE is to promote the safety and well-being of beachgoers in South Haven and beyond by focusing on education and educating beachgoers about staying safe in the water and on the beach through community outreach, advocacy, and training programs about the dangers of Lake Michigan. So our goals are to reduce the number of drowning incidents in South Haven and surrounding areas, to raise awareness about the dangers of Lake Michigan, especially rip currents, and how to stay safe in the water, knowing when not to enter the water, and then knowing when to get out. To educate beachgoers and local communities by providing resources and educational materials about the dangers of Lake Michigan, and to expand our program statewide in Michigan and eventually other Great Lakes states. And lastly, to build a water safety facility to host a rip current simulation machine that will provide educational training for not only SHAPE, but surrounding communities. And we can do that as a program that they could pay for, or we could just offer it as something that would then fund SHAPE. So according to data with the U.S. Life Saving Association, the Great Lakes region is known for having the highest number of drowning incidents in the country. So with Lake Michigan leading the way, in South Haven alone, we have seen a significant increase in drowning incidents in recent years, and not all drownings were on red flag days. In 2022, four people drowned when the flags were yellow. This highlights the urgency of our mission and the importance of educating beachgoers about water safety. An ambassador program has been proven to be effective, an effective tool in reducing drowning incidents, as proven by the Bradford Beach Ambassadors Program out in Milwaukee. And our trained ambassadors have a visible presence on the beach to provide a one-on-one opportunity to educate beachgoers about safe practices in the water and on the beach by making sure they are aware of the flag warning system, educating on the dangers of rip currents, identifying potential hazards, calling 911 for emergencies, and aiding with lifesaving devices when they are available. We are never to be thought of as the authority out there. We are, we do recognize SHAPE as the authority. I did have a two-hour meeting with Brandon, and he's really excited about the program too. The rip currents are a major contributor to drowning incidents in South Haven and around the Great Lakes. Our program emphasizes the importance of understanding rip currents and how to stay safe in the water. I've reached out to the University of Michigan, and I have connected with the Michigan Sea Grants, and we're talking about possibly doing a rip current study with environmentally-friendly dyes to map that current process. And then our goal is to expand our program statewide in Michigan and eventually Great Lakes states by collaborating with local organizations and communities. We aim to provide training and resources to beachgoers and local communities, ultimately reducing the number of drowning incidents across the state. Our ultimate goal is to change the label of being the deadliest Great Lakes shores to the safest. Through education awareness, collaborative community outreach, and physical beach patrols, we believe that we can reduce the number of drowning incidents and create safer, more informed beach-going communities. So in conclusion, SHAPE is committed to promoting beach and water safety, and particularly focusing on rip current education. Thank you.
Thank you. That's awesome. Now, that's exactly what we need, but it doesn't let us off the hook, though. We still have a lot of work to do, and we will take all the help we can get from you. Yep. There's Mr. Pratt.
My name is Bobby Pratt. I live at 6133 Oak Park Trail in Hazlet, Michigan. I wasn't going to come and say anything today, but you asked Mr. Fink if he came up with a silver bullet.
Yeah.
The CDC did a study about lifeguard effectiveness and determined that the chances of drowning at a properly protected beach is one in 18 million. That's a pretty effective silver bullet.
Yep. Now, and I have to, thank you. I have to say that we did discuss that, but I do appreciate you sharing that comment.
Sorry?
I do appreciate you sharing that comment. Thank you. Anyone else? Items not on the agenda. Okay, that gets us to item number 15, the city manager's comment.
Well, thank you, council. I know we, city staff are working on a number of different items. Next Monday, we'll, there's a number of us, Kim, Griffin, myself, and a few more, will be attending the Project Pathways interview program with the high school. We'd like to go in there and tell people how we got to our paths of employment and what stops we made along the way, and be there, available to answer any questions. I'm pretty happy to see a pretty strong contingent from the, from the city going to that program. So it's always nice to get the invite, and we try to rotate who gets to go and talk. Also, continuing some education, George, myself, and Griffin will be attending the municipal summit at the Bay Area Conference Center tomorrow, and I will be presenting or be on a panel of redevelopment-ready communities, which is something we're pretty happy. We're one of the few in this area that have obtained that status, and just talking about all the benefits that our hard work is paying off with a number of grants that we're available for. In addition, I wanted to just thank staff for their hard work on a number of different projects that you're talking about today, and also thank you for the council members who have responded on the short-term rental workshops. I know that we have a number of workshops. I'm trying to get organized, but it is a little hard to organize so many different schedules, so I'm continuing to work on what dates would be available, but thank you. I'd like to get them, I'd like to get those set up in, in April. So those are my comments, and thank you so much.
Okay. That gets us to, oh, anyone have any questions for Kate? Nope. Okay. Mayor and councilpeople comments. Let's start with Latisha.
I don't have any comments for tonight.
Okay.
No comment.
I just wanted to take a second and read a letter from our neighbor to the south, Mayor John Humphrey of New Buffalo, that we received just fairly recently, but I thought it was worth sharing. It's in regards to short-term rentals, and I think it's especially timely now that we've reached our cap and are still continuing the conversation. So it says, "My fellow public servants of the great city of South Haven, my name is John Humphrey. I am the mayor of the city of New Buffalo. In 2020, after years of distress and frustration over the problems being caused by the lack of city regulation on the proliferation of short-term rentals in our residential neighborhoods, I ran for city council on that single issue and was elected by the public, then was unanimously elected mayor by the city council. Short-term rental issues at the time specified were: the decreasing number of long-term residents, 75% of the housing stock is owned by second homeowners, the decreasing enrollment in local school systems, and the lack of ability to attract staff due to housing shortages, no long-term housing stock resulting in rents at 200% to 300% above county averages, premiums on single-family homes as a result of rental potential was making entry-level homes unaffordable, damaging our 100% service-based economy because businesses cannot find employees because there's no housing, the rise in nuisance complaints from short-term rental activity in terms of noise density, parking, parking, and other negative effects on the resident's quality of life. So since 2020, the city of New Buffalo has implemented the large set of regulations to protect our city from these negative effects. Most notably was the enforcement of our zoning ordinance, which denies the right to a new, to a new STR permit in R1, R2, and R3, leaving new permits to be issued exclusively to commercial areas and the waterfront. On February 22nd of this year, the Herald Palladium published an article titled, "South Haven Study: Short-Term Rentals Provide $27 Million to South Haven Economy." The article clearly omits certain important facts and proper context when it comes to effects of short-term rentals. The state of Michigan does not allow municipalities to levy any local taxes on tourism, so that all of the money is private income. That has zero direct benefit to the general taxpayer of South Haven. The city shares, the city share of local sales tax refunded by the state is a negligible amount in comparison to your general fund's budget, less than 1%. The cost of the local business making that $27 million has a public cost to the taxpayer in infrastructure and public safety that is not accounted for. The majority of the 431 service workers mentioned in the article do not live in the city of South Haven, so their incomes are not spent locally." And then it's wrapping up. Important points to keep in mind, every short-term rental has X multiplier in public costs versus traditional residency. Those costs are not accounted for. In New Buffalo, that cost is four times based on average occupancy of 10, so every short-term rental cost to the public service and infrastructure is four times a standard resident cost. South Haven tax dollars are subsidizing these costs to your community because you cannot tax short-term rental owners' income. Short-term rentals are a giveaway for the wealthy, non-local residents who have taken over your community, your business, communities. Private profits existed long before short-term rentals, as we know them now even existed. A casual review of your city's 2023 permit list shows over 700 entries and over 80% of the permitted homes being owned by non-local, non-Michigan residents. My great hope for the local residents of the city of South Haven is that your council has the wisdom to move forward accordingly. I wish you luck. And that's all from him. And I just shared that because I think he makes a few really valid points that are important as we continue this conversation on short-term rentals, and that I just still think we haven't found the right balance yet. I just wanted to share that into the record for people at home and here.
Sure. Excellent.
Thank you.
So I'd like to thank everyone that came today and appreciate everyone's comments. I also want to thank Jeff. You did an excellent job filling in as the mayor pro tem today. That's it.
All right. I wanted to thank Anton Badenhurst, Emily Hickman, Jim Hediger, and Chief Thompson, all for being here and participating and contributing to our meeting. all for being here and participating, contributing to our meeting. Most importantly, thanks all the residents for sharing their comments and all the important things that we did. George, thank you for the comment. Other than I botched the Pledge of Allegiance, I thought I did okay. I botched the Pledge of Allegiance somehow. With that, I would take a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.